Yes.
Good evening. Good evening. It is Monday, July the 10th, 2023, and the time is 6 o'clock. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and the manner required of law. At this time, the Board of Trustees will move into a closed meeting under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.07 and 551.074. No formal action will be taken in this meeting. We will return from the closed meeting shortly. All right. At this time, at this time, we will resume our meeting. And at this time, we will have our invocation by Chad Flowers from Vita Life Church and our pledge from Lieutenant Colonel Riley Brown from Horn High School. If you will stand, please.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Lord, I want to thank you for this school district, this, this board, and all that they are going to be discussing tonight. I pray, God, that your hand would be over every one of these board members. I pray, Lord, over every teacher of MISD, every faculty member. Most importantly, Lord, I pray over the students that we serve. I ask, Lord, that you guide every decision that's made tonight, especially in preparation for the coming school years. And, Lord, just make your face to shine over everything that is done here. Bless our city, bless our school district. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for our Texas pledge. I pledge allegiance to thee, on a Texas pledge. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. She is the head of the Corps at Horn High School. So congratulations to you this year. Thank you. Is there anyone that would like, anyone? Ms. Jobe is going to address the board. Okay. Is there anyone here on our board that has thought for a board moment? Okay. All right. It is time for our consent. It is an item that has a motion for our consent agenda. Anyone? So moved? And a second by Ms. Cuyker. Okay. All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, nay? Passed. Consent agenda passed. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, it's you.
Yes, ma'am. We have some appointments tonight that we'd like to get a report.
Yes, you have lots of them.
Yeah, we have some. So I believe our first is going to be Mr. Moore is going to move up to the lectern and introduce his new hires.
All right.
Can Brandon Musgrove join me up here at the podium? Brandon, this is for Director of Data Management. Brandon Musgrove earned his bachelor's degree in biology with a minor in chemistry from the University of North Texas in 2004. 2016, he received his Master's of Education in School Counseling from Lamar University. Brandon has served in public education for 17 years. He started his career as a seventh grade math teacher in Carrollton Farmer's Branch. In 2009, he came to senses and came to Mesquite ISD to teach eighth grade math at AC New Middle School. He then served as the avid coordinator at AC New for five years. For the previous six years, Brandon has served as the academic counselor at AC New. I'm proud to introduce Brandon Musgrove to you guys.
First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Rivera and the school board, Mr. Morris and Ms. Mayad for this opportunity. I very much look forward to serving the students and staff of MISD in this position for years to come. The reality is, no one achieves anything alone, and I've been very, very fortunate to be surrounded by good people. First of all, I'd like to thank my wife, Mackenzie. That's right behind Mr. Morris here. And also my daughter Reese. I have two other daughters that are not here, Avery and Maura. Avery's not feeling well, Maura had to stay home with her. I also would like to thank my parents, my mom and my dad. I also like to thank Kristi Davis and the entire academic counselor team for their support over the past several years. I look forward to continuing to support them in this new role. And lastly, I'd like to thank Regina Jackson and my entire AC New family. It's been a true joy and honor to work with such an incredible staff over the years, and words can't express how much my time with them means to me. Thank you very much.
And I've got one more if Liz will stand up. I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Director of Transportation, Liz Allen Ospina. Liz earned her Master's of Science in Management from Straver University in 2022. In 2018, she received her Bachelor of Arts in Public Administration from Florida Atlantic University. Liz has served in public education for five years. She started her career as a transportation zone administrator for Gwinnett County Public School in 2018. In 2021, she came to Dallas ISD as a transportation supervisor, where she was responsible for the supervision of 200 employees and a fleet of 231 buses. Liz, with her knowledge in management and public administration, will serve as a great asset here in Mesquite ISD. Welcome, Liz.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. And now our next appointee is going to be presented to us by Mr. Prado.
Good evening, President Hornsby, Board of Trustees. Thank you very much for supporting the appointment of Mr. Caleb Poppy. If you will please stand for the Coordinator of Contracts and Special Projects in the Purchasing Department. Mr. Poppy has over 15 years of school district procurement experience. His career began in Lancaster ISD as the Coordinator of Fixed Assets and Instructional Materials and assisted with competitive bid proposals and managed the vendor list. He was hired as the Purchasing Coordinator in Cedar Hill ISD in 2016 and was responsible for managing all procurement activities for the district, as well as implementing and overseeing the district credit card program. In 2019, he was promoted to Manager of Purchasing and Accounts Payables. He was recently the Director of Purchasing and Contracts Management for Cedar Hill ISD. He submitted and received the Award of Merit Purchasing Operations through the Texas Association of School Business Officials. He holds a TASBO certification as a Certified Texas School Business Official. He enjoys spending time with his family and fishing, and in his free time, he loves to cheer on the Saints.
Dr. Hammett?
Okay, I'm here this evening to introduce you to our new elementary math coordinator. So Julia Graham Chapman will please stand. All right. Julia Graham Chapman has worked in Mesquite ISD for 15 years. She started at Galloway Elementary, where for seven years she taught sixth grade, and then spent two years as math instructional specialist. It was in this role that Julia would set up math meetups for teachers across the district after school to talk about math. Julia then spent a year as the Math and Social Studies Instructional Coach at Frazier Middle School, before moving into the role of Assistant Principal, where she served at Berry Middle School and Mackey Elementary. Julia has a Bachelor of Arts in Science from UNT and a Master's in Educational Administration from Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. We are excited to recommend for hire and welcome to the teaching and learning family, Julia Graham Chapman.
Ms. Jobe will read the bios for the Assistant Principals. We have quite a few that'll be joining our family.
Yes, we do this evening. I'm going to start with Mr. Rodney Bagley, if you will stand. Great. He is going to be the new Assistant Principal at Horn High School. He's completed 23 years in the field of education and began his teaching career in Harlandale ISD as a behavior and inclusion teacher. He served in the role of Assistant Principal in San Antonio and Lubbock ISD. And in 2006, he moved to Dallas ISD, where he taught third, fifth, and sixth grade. In 2013, he joined Mesquite ISD, where he taught sixth through eighth grade at Beasley Elementary, Berry, and Woolley Middle School. He earned a Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies and a Master's of Arts in Education from the University of Texas, San Antonio. Welcome, Mr. Bagley. Also at Horn High School is Baron Jones, new Assistant Principal. Not here? Okay, we're going to skip that one. Sorry about that. Shaniqua Wallace, Assistant Principal at Horn High School. Shaniqua is completing 17 years in the field of education. She began her career as an English Language Arts and Reading Teacher at South Oak Cliff High School in Dallas ISD. In 2014, she served as a campus-based instructional coach at Carter High School and Segleville High School in Dallas ISD. In 2019, she served as the Lead Literacy Coach in Dallas, and she became an Assistant Principal at Samuel High School in 2020. Shaniqua earned her Bachelor of Science in Secondary Education from Polkwin College and her Master's of Educational Leadership from the University of North Texas. Congratulations. Next is Kristen DeRosa from West Mesquite High School, the new Assistant Principal there. Kristen has completed 14 years in the field of education, and she started her career in Aleaf ISD, where she taught physics and biology. She then transitioned to an instructional lead teacher in Dallas ISD. In 2021, she joined Mesquite ISD as an instructional specialist at Vanguard High School, and she earned a Bachelor of Science from Texas A&amp;M University and a Master's in Educational School Leadership and Policy Studies from the University of Texas at Arlington. Congratulations, Kristen. Next is the new Assistant Principal at Beasley Elementary, Rita Borbon. Thank you, Rita. So Rita has served eight years in public education. She began her career as a bilingual teacher in Dallas ISD. She then moved to Richardson ISD as a bilingual lead teacher, and she then became a bilingual instructional coach. She is currently an elementary Assistant Principal Intern in Dallas ISD, and she earned her Bachelor's Degree from Florida International University and her Master's from Southern Methodist University. Congratulations and welcome. At Cross Elementary School, our new Assistant Principal is Deidra Lester. Deidra has completed 14 years in the field of education, and she started her career as an avid tutor in Plano ISD. In 2011, she joined Mesquite as a fifth grade teacher at Hodges Elementary. In 2016, she moved to Gentry Elementary, where she taught third and fifth grade, and most recently served as an instructional specialist. Deidra earned a Bachelor of Science in Child Learning and Development at the University of Texas at Dallas and a Master's of Education in Curriculum and Instruction from Texas A&amp;M Commerce and a Master's in Educational Leadership from the University of Texas at Dallas. Congratulations, Deidra. Next, the new Assistant Principal at Galloway Elementary School is Nicole Donnell. Nicole has completed 10 years in the field of education, and all of that is in the school district, Mesquite ISD. She started her career as a total one instructional assistant in 2013. In 2018, Nicole began her teaching career as a fifth grade math teacher at Hanby Elementary. And in 2021, she transitioned into her current position as Instructional Coach at Hanby. Nicole earned her Bachelor of Science in Christian Studies and her Master's in Educational Leadership from Grand Canyon Christian University. Congratulations. From Henry Elementary School, we have Yasenia Molina. Ms. Molina is the new Assistant Principal there, and she's completed 24 years in the field of education. She began her career in La Jolla ISD, where she taught second through fifth grade. In 2004, she moved to Edinburgh ISD, where she taught second, fourth, and fifth grade. She became an Assistant Principal in 2021 in Dallas ISD. She earned a Bachelor of Business in Administration, International Business, from the University of Texas Pan America, and a Master's of Educational Leadership with Principal Certification from Sam Houston State University. Congratulations, Yasenia. The new Assistant Principal at Motley Elementary is Genevieve Juarez. Genevieve has completed 21 years in the field of education. She started her career in Dallas ISD, where she served as a kindergarten, second grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade teacher. In 2013, she came to Mesquite ISD as a fifth grade teacher at Hanby Elementary. In 2021, she was a fifth grade teacher in Fornie ISD. In this past year, she served as an LRS at Canada Elementary. Genevieve earned a Bachelor of Social Work from the University of Texas at Arlington and a Master's in Elementary Education and Principal Midmanagement Certification from TAMU Commerce. Congratulations, Genevieve. The new Assistant Principal at Purong Elementary School is Mandy Casey. If you'll stand. Ms. Casey. Ms. Casey has completed 23 years in the field of education. She began her career as an eighth grade Algebra I teacher in Garden City Unified School District. In 2001, she moved to Tulsa, I'm sorry, Tulsa Public Schools, where she taught fifth grade. In 2007, she joined Mesquite ISD, where she taught third through sixth grade, and most recently was the instructional specialist at Florence Elementary. She earned a Bachelor of Science from West Texas A&amp;M and a Master's in Teacher Leadership with a Principal Certification from Lamar University. Congratulations, Ms. Casey. And from Rutherford Elementary School, we have Kristi Carter, the new Assistant Principal there. Ms. Carter has completed 20 years in the field of education, all with Mesquite ISD and all at Rutherford Elementary. She started her career as a sixth grade teacher at Rutherford, and in 2012, she moved into the Campus Intervention Specialist role, which she currently still serves in. Kristi earned a Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies and a Master's of Education and Principal Certification from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Congratulations, Kristi.
Well, we'd like to welcome all those new administrators to Mesquite ISD and/or your new role in Mesquite ISD. Now, Trustees, if you noticed in the agenda, there was two positions that were posted tonight. One of them was the Principal of Rugel Elementary, and the other one was the Coordinator of Purchasing. Coordinator of Purchasing, we are still fine tuning who will be selected. And for the Principal of Rugel, we have follow-up interviews this week. We're trying to make sure that we meet the need of each of the campuses are currently vacant and that we adhere to the feedback that we receive from the campus, trying to select the best candidate that is fitted. So we will hopefully do that this week, and it will come in the August board meeting for introductions. But I just wanted to point those two out because they were listed and posted in the agenda, and they were not mentioned tonight.
Well, congratulations to all of you. You're looking for, I know you're looking forward to a great new school year. So boy, there's a lot of talent sitting out here, isn't there? I know. That's exciting, very exciting. I know one of them. That's right.
President Hornsby, if I could just mention, we would love to take your photo, your official school district photo outside these doors, if you have a moment. That'd be great, all the new positions.
Can we take about a six or eight minute, let's say, come back at seven? Okay. We'll come back at seven o'clock. So y'all go get your pictures. You know, Mr. Stringer, I believe we, I think we got four minutes that we can, you know, maybe move on. Yes. So let's do our thing. Mr. Stringer, if you would please come forward and talk about music.
It's not seven o'clock.
Yay! Oh, well.
I'm four minutes early. You know, us arts guys, we like to be, we like to be prompt.
You do.
That's right.
Yes.
To be on time is to be early. That's right. Band directors drilled that into me all the way through school. Good evening, President Hornsby, members of the board, Dr. Rivera. I'm glad to bring you the Music Effectiveness Report tonight. And just to start us off real quick, little quote from Yo-Yo Ma. "Music enhances the education of our children by helping them make connections and broadening the depth with which they think and feel. If we are to hope for a society of culturally literate people, music must be a vital part of our children's education." And I couldn't believe that more. And I think our district does a great job of supporting our music students and all of our art students and making sure they have all the opportunities that can be afforded to them. So just a real short video of basically our year in about a minute. That one was not played by our kids. That one's played by iMovie, yes. So we did a lot of work this year, as my first year in, in the office and with our teachers, about designing the vision of our Fine Arts Department in Mesquite ISD. So we serve to provide leadership that is both empathetic and empowering to our students, advance the arts through advocacy and support, develop a sophisticated experience in the art. That's something that took us a long time to come up with just the right wording of that, but to develop a real sophisticated experience in the arts for all of our students, which allows all children to achieve at the highest level. And that's something that we truly, we think our vision and what our mission really is. Enrollment figures for this year? Band, 782 students enrolled in high school band, 2,066 students enrolled in middle school band, which is quite an increase in our middle school band enrollment over last year, almost 300, over 300 students, bigger. Choir, 745 students enrolled in high school choir, 1,504 students enrolled in middle school choir, which is a small increase in middle school from our choir students. Orchestra, once again, a very large increase in middle school numbers. 390 students enrolled in high school orchestra and 810 enrolled in middle school orchestra, which is almost 200 students more in middle school orchestra than in previous year. So our enrollment trends, a total decrease of 121 students involved in our high school music programs from last year to this year. That is mainly our pandemic students that are now making their way through the system. So we started two years of really pretty small sixth grade classes, and now they're starting to enter eighth grade, high school, ninth, 10th grade. So we're going to see probably a couple more years of just a small decline, but we didn't lose as many students as we started. We've actually retained way more of our students than we had in previous years. Our middle school, we had a total increase of 528 students involved in our middle school music programs, which was a really nice increase, most of those students at the sixth and seventh grade level. So we're really seeing a lot of that growth coming up. And by the percentages, 77% of all students enrolled in Mesquite ISD are in a fine arts classroom. And that's not including those that are involved in multiple classrooms. That's every student counted one time. 77% of our students are enrolled in a fine arts class, which we think is incredible for an elective program. A little chart just to show you where we're at. And you can see bands on the top, choir, and then orchestra down there. You can see the band is really recovering very, very good from the pandemic, coming close to pre-pandemic numbers. Orchestra the same way. You see the dip in orchestra was not as severe over the pandemic as the other disciplines. And they're actually all the way recovered to pre-pandemic numbers. We're expected to exceed those numbers next year. And choir, we're still dipped a little bit, but you can start to see that line turning just a little bit. Enrichment activities and programs. We had a district-wide mariachi ensemble, and it actually had its first performances of the year. We performed in the community several times. I think a total of six times they performed out in the community this last year. We were very excited to showcase them, seeing where that's going to lead us and where that's going to take us. I think that's a really, it's a growing art. The Texas Music Educators Association just started an all-state path for those kids about three years ago that were involved in mariachi music, and we saw the first two performances of the all-state mariachi ensemble. It's absolutely incredible, and I think it's going to really inspire our students. Middle school music students participated in all-city band, orchestra, and choir programs. This was actually our first year to bring some of those back, completely post-pandemic as they were prior. Audition groups that actually performed with clinicians that we hired from outside was really great. Those were some amazing performances. As a matter of fact, what you see on the side there is our all-city middle school choir. All district fourth grade students attended a performance of the Fort Worth Symphony, which is actually something very unique to our district. Most districts use less professional symphonies. Some hire musicians. Sometimes they just have a group of kids or a group of students come in and show off the instruments to different students. We actually perform with the professional symphony. They come out to Mesquite High School. So our students see professional symphony in their space, which is really neat. It was awesome, and the symphony works with Dr. Gordon to work on the program. We voted on the program, and it was just a magnificent program this year, full of diverse music, some of it I didn't even know, which was pretty awesome. And just seeing those kids, their faces light up as they heard a tune that they knew or something like that was really neat. All of our district fifth grade students, we send them out to Fair Park, to the music hall at Fair Park, and they saw the Fort Worth Opera out there, and they saw Hansel and Gretel this year, and it was super great. And the kids reacted so amazing. It was awesome to watch the whole place just kind of go crazy, and then all of a sudden the singing would start, and they would get silent. But then the funny stuff would happen, and they would erupt again. It was just really neat to watch all the students. And being my first year in the district and just doing these big, big productions that we do here, it was really amazing to watch how the students react to that and how we exposed them to different music. Our elementary students have the opportunity to participate in Mesquite Children's Chorus. This is the first year we had Mesquite Children's Chorus back at full force, and I can tell you that their concerts were unbelievable. I was, I just, my jaw dropped the first time I heard them perform, and their end-of-the-year production was all about joy and happiness. And to watch the students' face light up at the end of those songs was just so amazing. And I can tell you, and it really worked. We take them around to different elementary schools and do a little tour with them in the winter and then again in the spring. And we had more students audition for the Mesquite Children's Chorus than we've ever had before, and we actually had to expand the chorus a little bit and tell more students no than we ever had before. So that is a really great thing that we're having to do and show off our students and really have a select choral group with our elementary group. We're hoping that they are going to be able to really perform even more next year and that we're going to be able to do even more things, potentially take them to Texas Music Educators Association Conference and do those things that we've done before with that group. And all five traditional high schools presented a school musical, which incorporated its student musicians with the theater, visual arts, and dance departments. It's one of the best things about fine arts is when all of our disciplines come together to create something that is so wonderful. And all five of our high schools continue each year to produce musicals that are just first rate. I went to all five shows this year, and I was blown away with our talent that we have on stage. We had Down in the Pit. The Horn High School, the entire orchestra accompanied the students on stage. It was just really, really a great time for all five high schools. Awards and honors we gained this year. Fifty-three total UIL Sweepstakes Award, which is up quite a bit from last year. Over 1,000 students earned first division medals at UIL Soul and Ensemble Contest. 278 students earned a position in one of the TMEA region ensembles, up almost 60 students from last year. Six students were named to a TMEA all-state ensemble. We only had two the year before. All five bands, once again, advanced to the area marching contest, which is not a year that the five A bands can advance to state, but we do still have an area prelims and finals with them. Potite High School placed second in the area finals, and North Mesquite placed fourth in the area finals. And of course, this is our 10th year anniversary for being named by the NAMM Foundation one of the best communities in music education in the nation. So we're really excited about that. We're really excited about it being 10 years and getting that distinction once again from Mesquite ISD, showing how amazing our music programs truly are. So that's it. Any questions that you may have?
I do have a question.
Sure.
I appreciate the report. It took a while to read it, but it was a great report, and the presentation's great. And I'm very impressed with the uptick, especially in the middle school students being involved, because I think that'll filter through, because we've all because we've all been concerned about how we can get more of our kids involved in fine arts programs. And the question I wanted to ask is, I like the vision. The question is, as we move forward, I don't know if money ever comes available or other resources, what can we as a board do to help enhance the engagement of these kids in middle school on up, or even down to elementary? That, so that in the future, if things come available and we're looking at budgets or whatever, what will help us move that needle even higher and at a steeper pace?
There's a lot that we can do, but I can tell you, we've done a lot this year. So we redesigned some of our elementary offerings. So next year, students will have more access to general music in kindergarten through fifth grade than they ever have before. So we're really excited about what that's going to, what that's going to take us, because we think our students are going to go into middle school with more knowledge of band, choir, orchestra in order to grow. So that's one of the big things that we did this year. And it's, it's complete redesign, complete rethinking of what we're going to do and how we're going to deliver music education. And we're working towards is to start removing barriers from our students in order to provide them access to our programs. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, you have to have some bang for your buck, right? You have to get some money to go somewhere. And so we have begun the process of providing more school instruments, providing more things for our students, so our students can achieve a little bit more. So we're going to continue to expand that over the next several years, more than likely, in order to make our, our arts programs grow even more. But that, that will filter all the way through the high school level.
That was going to be my question, is there particular campuses or, or feeder patterns that need extra?
Yeah.
And so y'all are working on that.
Yeah, we, we're targeting specific locations. We actually did a survey of all the directors, asking them, what do you, what do you need? If you had unlimited resources we could provide you, what do you need to make your program go? And then we're targeting specific areas where we think that that's needed to input, to encourage the growth for those students, especially right now at the beginning level, to make sure that students don't come in and say, oh, you chose band, and now you have to pay so much money. No, you chose band, we can help you with an instrument, and here we go moving forward.
Thank you.
When does, when does orchestra start? Does this still start in elementary?
No, it is starting in sixth grade. Band, choir, and orchestra, all three start in sixth grade now.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, as a stringer and the old days time ago, we used to, our choirs, our groups used to go and do shows at the mall, for example, which was a chance for them to really practice, but at the same time, show their craft and, and get kids involved, like, oh, I want to do that when I grow up. Are we still doing things like that, going out and doing some public?
Yeah, since the pandemic, we've started that again. So that hasn't been, that was something that we didn't do for a couple of years. And I think we're seeing the results of that in, in our recruiting and our retention. But that is something that we really began back in earnest again this year. I would say would be the first year I felt like we were full in. Everybody was going out, they were performing. We had, you know, performances in the community. We had lots of performances all over our community, which I think is really important for the district to get out and say, here we are, this is what we do, this is, this is who we are. Hey, come into our schools and see our performances. That's something that we're really targeting for next year, is to how do we draw the community into our school buildings to see a concert or to see a musical or to see something like that? We want the community to be drawn to our buildings, to feel like it's, it's yours as well. So that's something that we're really working on of how do we market ourselves? How do we brand ourselves? How do we, how do we get people in? Because one of the things that used to irritate me the most as an orchestra director is people would come and say, you're the best-kept secret that we have. And I'm like, we're not trying to keep this a secret. We want everyone to know how great we are. And I think our programs here are the same way.
I'd like to ask one more question. Several years ago, I talked to the fine arts back then. We had the Battle of the Drums over at the mall, which was a great hit for the people that were shopping, kids were there, and they went back and forth on the battle. It was great. I was wondering if we could start doing some of that again around the community.
We are excited to do anything that we're asked to do. That is one of the things that we, we, we are looking for opportunities to get out in the community. And I think I could, I speak for all of our directors to say, we're excited to get back out into our community. And I think anytime I've thrown something out last year that said, hey, we've been invited to do this, I had three or four groups wanting to sign up to do it. I think that's a really important aspect.
I want to thank you, because one of the programs we have, which is new, is the Mariachi Band, for example. And I know Hispanic Forum of Mesquite, we partner with that band and expose them, show them, take them to our activities. And I think that's been very beneficial for them. So as long as you let us keep doing that, that would be awesome.
We are happy to, to help with that as long as possible. Carla Rodriguez over at Mesquite High School runs that program for us and is doing an incredible job. They're recruiting, they're actually starting to see an advanced, more advanced group come out, and then starting new beginners as well. So we're working out, how are we going to, what, what is that going to look like in five years? That's something her and I had a lot of discussion about is where, where is this growing to? Because that's a genre of music that we find in the state is just growing leaps and bounds. And so we want to encourage that here.
I think I remember this time last year, there was some discussion on the state marching contest as far as eliminating the every-other-year. Whatever happened with that?
We are going every single year, starting next year. It, it, UIL voted at their fall meeting last year to eliminate the every-other-year. So state marching contest is every year for every single classification. So we will be competing to go to state marching contest every single year, which, you know, once again, the, the district has guaranteed, if we have bands that go, we're going to fund it. And I think that's one of the great things about Mesquite ISD is we don't say no to our children. We make sure that they have the opportunities they deserve.
77% of our students enrolled in at least one fine arts course. Can that be increased?
Yes, it can be increased. And I, I've always said, a high-functioning fine arts program is somewhere around 80%. That's a really, that's a, that's an industry standard of you have really high-functioning, and we're just a shade under that. I'm, I'm, I will round up and say we're at 80%. But we're always trying to increase the number of students that we have involved in the arts. And once again, we're doing a lot of things with middle school electives and those kinds of things in order to give students opportunities. You know, I, I grew up in Mesquite ISD, and I was fortunate to have an opportunity to do both band and orchestra. And that shaped my whole life as we came forward. I didn't know it when I was in sixth grade, choosing orchestra, because it got me out of PE, and choosing band in seventh grade, because it got me out of PE. But, but after that, you know, it just shaped my whole life forever. And so that's something that we want to see. We want to be able to influence our students to say, even if you're not going to be a musician for the rest of your life, we want you to be a music advocate. We want you to be a fine arts advocate for the rest of your life.
The high school musicals every year, my wife and I have been attending for a long time. But will we be able to take advantage of the marquees that are at the high schools? I have people at where I worship, they'll ask me, beginning in Thanksgiving, hey, Greg, be sure and let us know when the high school musical schedules are coming out so that we can attend. So that's something that the community really looks forward to, and, and we do as well.
Yeah, and we've just gotten all those on the calendar right before we left school in May. So we're going to make sure that those are advertised. Yeah, that was one of the things, one of the places where I saw it, we have these professional-level musicals going on. We should fill the hall every single night with, with, with community members. So yeah, we're really going to work. Which one of the, one of my personal goals was to make sure that we market the fine arts better than we have before.
Love seeing. Love seeing the way that the elementary got more access to the music and art. I even saw it in my youngest. I was like, so he came and sang it? It's amazing. It's amazing the way it shapes their day and just changes the experience. So that's high five to everybody who worked on that.
We're very excited, we're very excited about our elementary initiative. And we think that's going, we think in a few years, we're going to bring back and show you how much our arts, how much the arts programs grow due to some relatively small changes we've made, sometimes bigger changes that we've made in the elementary level, watching those grow up as we move forward, yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate you, we appreciate your support more than you can know.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we have a, a report from Dr. Flindlass.
Good evening. We are going to talk about the strategic roadmap, the work that we've done, where we've been, and then our plans moving forward. So if you will remember, back in the spring of '21, when we were in the middle of COVID mess and not knowing exactly what, what the future was going to look like, that's when we came together and we made this three-year plan. And we narrowed in on the seven categories of the things that we had started right before COVID hit and things that COVID had pressed pause on. And, and that's what we focused on. So we started, oh, sorry. Our seven categories, we had been working with accreditation. We were still in pilot mode, and then we had to press pause. And IO had kind of just gotten off the ground when COVID hit. Facilities upgrade, that was when Pete Poppy had just come in. And so as Mr. Prado can attest to, anytime you have a new CFO come in, the facilities assessment begins. Dr. Gully started her work with the LET teams. And we started our goals for literacy and our third graders reading on time. We started a lot of the read-play-talk work that we're doing. That's when we also started our partnership with Holdsworth and all of the LTO work, the Leadership Development work. And Vanguard High School was about to open. So that's kind of where we were. And if you'll remember, we made 14 different teams. We had central admin, campus admin, board members, teachers, students, parents, community, business members. We had representatives on each teams. We had a design team, we had action teams, and we built all of this work together. So this work started, we started all of this planning in spring of '21, and then it was board-approved in June of '21, and then we started, we put it into place. So we just finished year two of this plan. And this next school year, we'll start year three and the final year. As you look at this, remember how we color-coded. So we're really looking at, right now, we're really looking at the orange of kind of where we're going next year with each one of these. Accreditation, that is well, well underway. We're out of the pilot stages. We have our schools going, we have our systems down. Really now, it's about just continuously surveying, making sure we know what you guys think, what E2L thinks, what the campus teams think, making sure we're making the process, revisions to the process, and then we're keeping the stakeholders informed. With IO, the big focus for next year is really narrowing in on five pilot schools. So we have Range, McDonald, and North Mesquite from the North feeder pattern, and then Agnew and Mesquite High School from that feeder pattern. Those are going to be our five pilots. And we are going to work, Kara's team is going to work to make IO very strong at our five pilots, while of course, still using it at all campuses and still trying to make sure that all students and parents engage with it at all of our campuses. Facilities upgrade between Kara's team, working on the technology plans, and a principal committee with classroom designs and working with computer lab spaces and, and what we do with those, and Mr. Prado's teams assessing the buildings and putting systems in place to make sure that we have a plan for which buildings get fixed when and, and how we decide this. So Prado's team is working hard on that. As you are well aware, Dr. Gully has done a lot of great work with the LET team. Between the LET, LET captains, the LET ambassadors, the emerging leaders, and of course, the Mesquite Promise. And her focus is going to be to continue all of that, making sure that our students have engaging leadership experiences and making sure that Mesquite Promise permeates all that we do. Literacy lens, this is a lot of work from Dr. Hammett's team. They have worked hard to ensure that literacy resources are in all of our kids' hands all year, whether we're in school or not. Partnerships with our city libraries, online digital libraries, read-play-talk book events, Lena Start, just making sure that our kids have books in their hands. Hammett's team is also this year going to be using more diagnostic tools in K through two to monitor student performance. And then you'll be hearing updates on that this fall. LTO, this is our, this is the work that came from our partnership with Holdsworth. And this is our, we're starting our fifth year with the LTO work. The focus, the focus moving into this next year is going to be about using the LTO as the appraisal for leadership positions. If you'll remember, we started with our APs, and then we moved it to principals and central office, some of central office last year. And we're going to be pushing that through more of the central office leadership positions this year. And Vanguard, they are doing, Clance's team is doing an amazing job of, the goal for this year was business partnerships and making sure that our kids get the experiences that they need while they're at Vanguard, plus internships and things like that. They have over 50 business partnerships that they work with on a regular basis. Kraft, FedEx, Baker Brothers, Dallas Regional Medical Center, Ashley Furniture. So our students at Vanguard are getting some great opportunity with those businesses. And then he is always trying to bring in more. He's done a really great job with that work.
Interesting. I was at summer leadership with, with Tattesby this summer, and somebody asked us about our firefighter thing. How do you do that? What did y'all do? It's already out in the state of some of the things that we're doing at Vanguard. So I thought that was really, that was really a cool, cool moment, I thought.
Yeah, kudos, kudos to Vanguard and their team. That's an exciting thing for our kids. So moving forward, when you look at, when you look at the seven, the seven categories that we are entering year three on, our final year of the roadmap, the, the exciting thing about it is accreditation and LET and LTO. That, that work is what we do now. It is a regular practice, and it'll continue to be a focus. But it is ongoing, and it's what we do. So we're excited, excited to say that. Of course, Vanguard is up and running and in year two, and things are going great at Vanguard. So it is time that we, that we shift and we start, we start making plans for what we're going to do next. So while we finish year three of the strategic roadmap, we will also be in the process of planning. That'll be our planning year for our next strategic district plan. Oops, let me go back. So these, these are our priorities for the work that we're going to do with our next strategic plan. As you know, things have shifted, and we have to be focused, we have to be focused on things that, for example, the, the SEL for staff and students. That's, that's been a big thing since COVID. And so that, that's going to be a focus for us, making sure that our students and, and our staff have what they need. Safety and security, of course, will always be a big priority for us. IO, this is going to continue to be something that we focus on, something that we move towards. Parent and student engagement, we're very excited about this, that, that we are ready to move past COVID. We are ready to get our families back into the schools. We are ready to partner with our families and just get school going back the way that it was back before COVID. We want our parents back in the buildings, and so we're excited to make this happen. And then, of course, literacy is always going to be, read-play-talk, literacy, all of that will always be a big, a big focus for us. And all of this will be within the lens of the Mesquite Promise.
I'm glad you mentioned the Mesquite Promise, because that's another program, like Mrs. Hornsby was saying. Hornsby was saying. The programs that people notice that Mesquite is doing, Mesquite Promise is very much noticed, and at, to the point where even Tazby Leadership wants to have us to really showcase the Mesquite Promise.
Yeah.
We're actually been selected to showcase the Tazby Convention this year. On September 29th, we have a delegation coming over and visiting our district to view
That's right.
how we're implementing the Mesquite Promise. And, you know, as Dr. Fein class alluded, you know, there's these, these are five components that we did not, I mean, some of these things we, we have from our previous strategic roadmap. But like she was saying, post-pandemic, we didn't have a crystal ball. We didn't know what the needs were. One of those needs that she so eloquently exposed and, and detailed was the, we knew that our students were need social emotional support. What we didn't foresee, to be quite honest, was our staff, how much our staff was needing that as well. And there was no way to tell that at the time that we were experiencing these changes. And so staying nimble and responsive to the needs of the organization, we're focusing on this now as she moves on with the strategic planning, which is a five-year process. But as we do that, we're going to go ahead and focus on these things to ensure that we're well-prepared as we continue to focus on that. And we've talked a lot, as a team of eight, about the focus on leadership, I mean, on literacy, on literacy, and how much this board has invested in ensuring that we address the pre-K two, and an emphasis there. So then at a later time, we see our results flourish into three to five, not the other way around.
So this fall, what, what we will be doing is, we're going to partner with E2L. They're going to help us with our district strategic planning. And our goal of, of this in the beginning is, we want to hear from everyone. So they are going to start with a survey to try to get feedback from community, families, students, employees, everyone. They're going to take all of that data and compile it for us. They're also going to do community forums with our communities and families, and then focus groups with communities, families, students, and employees. So they are going to gather a whole lot of data for us to use. They will then go over all of that with us, give us their expert opinion on, on what they think, and offer us their guidance. We will have, they'll lead us, they'll lead a board workshop, and then we will begin the strategic design work so that we are ready to start this work fall of '24. That is it.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First one is, who are we going to use to help facilitate the planning for the strategic plan?
E2L.
Okay, E2L.
Yes, sir.
Other question I had is the LTO. What kind of response are we getting from that, from the, the folks that are going through that? Has it, is it very beneficial? Is it working? Or I know that it's, it's something, you, has to have some flexibility. Can you give us a little bit of input onto how it's being received, and is it working like we think it should work?
Sure. So the LTO, we started with awareness, wanting, wanting leaders to know, wanting people to know, anybody who wants to be a leader, wanting them to know what it is, how it works, how you can use the rubric to grow yourself, how you can use the resources, all, all of those things. So it started with awareness, and then moved into application with different groups at different times. So the, what we will, what we hear from assistant principals and principals, from people outside of our district who come in and apply for jobs, we hear about it a lot in interviews, of how they've used it, how the specific behaviors are more specific to what it is they need to do versus, versus TTEZ, TPEZ, a model like that, that the role-specific behaviors within the rubric, specific under the level of leadership that you are, is, working on that is very beneficial and very specific to where you're trying to grow. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you. This is not easy work, and I appreciate all that you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we have an action item. Next is to select a delegate to the 2023 Tazby Delegate Assembly.
Ms. Hornsby, I have a question. Do you, are, are you planning to attend the convention this year?
Yes, sir.
Bobby, are you planning to attend? Are you going to attend the convention in Dallas this year?
I am. But I'll, thank you. Are you attending this year?
I'm attending.
I think that Tia might want to serve as the alternate. Does that matter?
I'm going to come, I'm going to come.
At the end of the week. The end of the session.
Okay.
You'll be there the Saturday.
I'll be there Saturday.
Okay, that's when, that's when the delegate will sound.
Yes. Sorry, you want to do that?
You can do it.
It doesn't matter to me. I've done it many times. Okay, that's fine.
Well, Ms. Hornsby, I move that this board appoint Elaine Hornsby as a delegate, and Ms. Tia call you as the alternate.
Yeah. This is, second, okay. Motion, and this is a voting item. All those in favor, or is there any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Of course, I will also be a delegate since I'm a
Yeah, that's right. Uh-huh, he is.
I'll be there to help you.
We got, we get a benefit.
We have a benefit of two, two voting delegates, yeah. That's nice.
So I'll be there to
Yeah.
help you.
Cool. All right. All right. Approve the termination of Paper Education Company Services. Mr. Prado, this is an action item.
I thought we were going to go the whole meeting without hearing.
Here I am again. Well, good evening. There's lack of funding. President Hornsby, Board of Trustees, Dr. Rivera, there's an item for consideration regarding paper contract due to lack of funding, as stated in the document. I'll be more than happy to answer any specific questions related to the topic, or to the funding component.
Is it not, we're not canceling our paper contract? We're canceling
Online tutoring.
Online tutoring is the actual, Paper is the name of the company that we're contractually asking to consider.
Any one of our teachers to hyperventilate or anything?
We do have Paper.
And we have plenty of Paper.
Is there any discussion?
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Oops. I banged the gavel before I, we did the thing. I'll get better at this, don't worry. Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is an action item. Mr. Poole, you're up.
He's the only one in the audience.
I know.
There you go.
School Board, School Board President, Dr. Rivera. Here tonight, Encore easement is requesting electrical easement along the front footage of the McKenzie property near Vanguard, seven and a half feet for the 1,200 feet. And basically, we owned the property before the infrastructure got there. So they have to get power across. So we recommend the approval of this Encore easement on the McKenzie property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Don, where, where is Lakeside Road? I see it coming into the intersection. Is that near where P. Lucas is?
That's a road that ties to, that goes all the way to AC New. That's that road coming through, and there's, there is an easement back there for a road, even though it's a creek.
Okay.
So. That's interesting, interesting. Okay, this is a, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? For, all those in favor? Oops, sorry.
Obviously. Because I wouldn't want it.
I just think it'd be in the record.
So I can get one later.
Yeah.
It's in the record.
All those that approve, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Guys, I think this is the end of our business, and we are officially adjourned at 7:38.